And then the repairs that you're doing, just the concrete repairs. Are you going to be, if there's any architectural detail, are you going to try to keep those? Or are you just gonna do it?
No. The contractor will be required to match those architectural details. So if you have any scoring on the existing bridge, any chambers, any offsets, that'll all have to be matched.
Okay.
What, and in order to do that, like I said earlier, we're gonna use formed concrete repairs and not a spray-on type application where you lose some of that, some of that detail.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have one more, which is about the National Registry. Now, I don't know if I understood you correctly, so I want to ask you. Because you said that, you said it's not eligible for the National Registry, but that it hasn't really been vetted through the state historic district yet?
No.
So is there a possibility it can be on there?
Well, what has happened is that the bridge itself is not eligible for the National Registry. That determination has been made.
Okay.
So unless there's new information that's uncovered, that decision will hold.
What, what is, if you, it's brief, I don't know, the criteria for it to, what is it lacking is my question, to be on the National Registry, what do you look for and what's preventing it from being on the list?
Innovative engineering designs, associated with a, a leading design person, an important historic fact in the area related to the bridge, those types of issues. So by 1921, reinforced concrete technology was already 10 to 12 years old. So you have a lot of other examples of leading edge technology. The Walnut Lane Bridge that we showed here was a 1909 construction, so that's 12 years before this one. So, you know, that's part of the reason why that's on the National Registry is that it was at the leading edge of the, of change in technology.
Yes, well, thanks. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
And that wouldn't affect the design of the bridge anyway. It's still going exactly the same.
Nothing.
The only thing is, is a piece of paper. And that's, it's beyond the, beyond the rest.
Well, with a piece of paper, it can get funding.
So, thank you very much. I know you guys will keep inspecting, keep it up.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about that. You're in communications with Mr. Salz all the time. He'll keep us in the loop. We want to thank you all very much for coming in. Thank you.
Like I said, like we leave these here.
We love it. We make it over. We appreciate everything. Thank you very much. If you need to wrap up and get out, nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night.
All right, guys, next we're gonna move over to the 2017 preliminary budget review. Everybody had a chance to go in and answer their questions. I know most of us did. How do we proceed with this? We're gonna make a motion, then we'll go into discussion.
I'll make a motion of the 2017 pro-budget preliminary budget. Second?
We have a motion of second. Okay. We'll do a discussion, then we'll take the vote. Right now, if I, we have a balanced budget, 7.7 and a half.
7.53 percent.
7.53 percent, which is pretty good. You checked, our bond rating is great.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I've said, most others did come in and asked questions. Does everybody have any outstanding questions they'd like to ask? Everything in the budget, these guys have been going crazy on it, so I'll start down with Phil. Phil, behalf of, I know if I was asked that?
Just, since I am the liaison to the department right now, I do see a trial. Is there a reason for that?
What page would everybody put?
Page 12.
Actually, it's more than what they spent.
It's less than last year's budget, but it was projected to be more, 70 million or more actually projected for this year.
Ninety-three they spent after their allowance.
We already got a letter confirmed from DART, that's the amount.
That is the amount that DART says.
Okay. Josh, anything?
Yeah, just follow up on what Chip said, just so we say it out loud in case the Detroit are about this. We expect this to preserve downtown's top quadrant.
That is correct.
And this is a no taxing to its budget for the fourth year thereafter. And that would make us, leave the only borough of Chester County to not raise taxes in each of the last four years.
Alex, I know you spent a lot of time on it. Jeff, you had, you asked your question, Jeff, you went?
Oh.
Most of it is what it is. There's not a lot of wiggle room. Most of it.
Some of your questions, I think, were already answered regarding, it seems like all of our energy budgets have gone down from what we budgeted. And I'm assuming that's due to energy saving, things that we've installed.
We did have a big savings. We renegotiated our electrical bids, so we brought in a consultant and we got a better bid on electricity for all of our street lights, traffic signals. Jack's been going to LED lights, which is a huge savings in the long run, so LED traffic lights, streetlights are big savings. And then with the, I want to say like $10,000 or $90,000 has been saved over the course of our contract with the electric renegotiations.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Anything else?
This time.
Ian, I want you to have a chance to get in and answer questions. We have a few now.
Yeah, I have some questions now.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused. I see new, new funding codes that I didn't see last year. And I'm, although, I don't understand why some disappear in, okay, like for instance, in the 2016 general fund, we had account 415, which may be scary, and 416 is on the jury board. But I don't see that under the total general fund expenditures in 2017.
They were moved, I restructured some of the coding for DCD to match their guidelines. So I think we were talking about 415 and 416 combined all into 414.
414.
Yeah. That's page nine.
If you remember through our audit, we always got audited, and one of the things that came up was our, you know, account codes were not compliant with the state because our software didn't allow that. Now it does, and Carrie went in and spent quite a bit of time and confused everyone, I have to say. We're doing research. It's all now to the state requirements, so.
Good job.
Just bring up the stuff. Anything else?
Yeah, so then, I understand you changing the codes and stuff, but I did notice that, I guess I need to understand, in prior years, that the money to Main Street was under 488 marketing. I guess that's correct, 25,000 each year. And this time it's now under 487 business development. Even though we do have a 488 account for marketing, why was that changed over to business development?
It was just a management decision. It was more of a business development cost than it was a marketing cost. And the DCD, we created the 487, it was a business development capital. So that was just part of the restructuring.
So that was just created and that was for this?
The state had a better code for where that money come from.
Again, we're just trying to get to the point.
Yeah, it really wasn't the marketing cost, so.
Anything else?
Okay, so, yeah, well, I have my, my same question that I, I pretty much ask every year, and the mayor did answer it somewhat last year, about funding Main Street. And when I asked, the mayor answered my question saying, to explain about the Main Street program, that the borough is required to provide funding to the Main Street program. So first of all, is it matching again, matching contribution?
Yes, they do match. They do match every year.
Didn't want to match.
And then, then my other question is, so is this being done as, as you indicated last year, that's a requirement of the state that we fund them?
Are you talking?
I guess you, like, since you're the one that had to answer.
I, I, you mentioned, I'm not on the board.
Okay, so, our, and I had a question, I just saw a solicitor from last year, it's not here, but as far as funding a nonprofit, I don't, I don't see where in the law we are.
I think.
Where we are allowed to fund a nonprofit, a general nonprofit?
Oh, I don't know.
That's why money gets their part of the state program.
Okay. Can Josh answer that, please?
Yeah, so, in United States of America, it is frequent that governments, whether it's federal, state, or municipalities, fund nonprofits to do the work of the government. Oftentimes, the government will give money to nonprofits to feed hungry people, or the county gives money to nonprofits that build housing for folks. Municipal governments fund nonprofits to put out fires when people's houses catch on, catches, catch on fire. That's unique to United States of America in that we rely on nonprofits and volunteer work to save taxpayer dollars to offer, to do some of these social causes. And that's something that I'm particularly proud of in this community, because we tend to have more nonprofits doing that type of work than some other communities. We have to fire departments that are staffed, and those are volunteers that are doing the work that we would have to pay for if they weren't volunteering to do it otherwise. Our community is lucky enough to have a nonprofit Main Street Association, which raises money on its own behalf to more than match what the, the municipal contribution is in terms of economic development in our community. If you look at boroughs that don't have a Main Street Association, they give over $100,000 to consultants and other things to write grants, whether it be enough to have a group of volunteers committed to raising money to, to, to do, among other things, improve public parks in our downtown, help open up businesses in our community, rally the community around economic development opportunities, like the train station, among others. So that cost, that $30,000 cost is, is, is a fantastic value to the downtown taxpayers and to the nonprofits that we contribute to. DART, the library, and the fire department, and that is indicative of just the United States of America culture, the state, the county, the federal government, all levels of government in this country fund nonprofits to do the work of the government.
You have a question on whether it's legal, the other day on the town.
Well, I think, I'll bring up that at one point, I don't know, Council of the Borough and Mayor's, but there was a point where a nonprofit was, this was had to be played out, was asking for funding, and as I read the minutes from the meeting, Council of the Borough said that the borough can't fund nonprofits. So, so I'm kind of interested why, that Council of the Borough is looking at funding this nonprofit.
Yeah, I honestly don't remember saying that.
Oh, no. Well, maybe the minutes were inaccurate.
If you have a question on 30,000 expenditure, please, we'll all back to it.
Yes, I do.
Stick to the budget, please.
I, I am.
Thank you.
That was what I was.
Go ahead, Ann.
So as far as funding any nonprofits, and I believe that the borough is required prior to distributing any money, or giving any money, or allocating any money to a nonprofit, the state law requires that the nonprofit provide a detailed accounting of how the prior year's money was used, that we're not allowed to give more money until we receive a detailed accounting of how the prior's money.
Yeah, I have it written down. Be the cell to us, we'd like to.
It's in the law.
We'd like to meet.
It's, I think our solicitor's the internet, and it is in our, it's in the, in the law.
I'm not aware of any specific provision requiring a nonprofit to provide verification.
Thank you.
Depending on what you're referring to, I could take a look at it and see if it would apply given the facts. I mean, a lot of times, these are fact-specific scenarios. Obviously, you want to account for any fraud, any self-healing with nonprofits, all the penalties, so, you know, for that, that kind of thing. So these kind of things tend to, I think, just be a lawyer, take the pen, but yes, a lot of times, it depends, but as a per se rule, is it improper to give to a nonprofit?
It's fair to throw it in through the books, Pat. Anything else on that?
Yeah, so my other, my other concern, and it's a question, is, I understand, so we've been, we've been contributing money to Main Street now for several years, and what I don't see, what I haven't seen, and I would love to see, is how has this increased the revenue to the borough? How is this, what has been done?
It's given us so much more back.
How so? Over and above what we could accomplish through our own?
Guys, that's not debate on what they could have made, didn't make. If you have a question on 30,000, I was expecting.
This is my question. It is my question.
I don't want to debate, unless you guys want to debate.
I'm asking for facts. How's that? I'm asking, I'm not debating. I'm not debating.
I'd like to know how great the Main Street has helped us, and she needs to know that.
I'm asking, yeah, for numbers, physically. How, how is, our, our investment of $30,000 a year, how is that benefit of the taxpayer?
All right, well, we.
So we can justify contributing $30,000 again?
I, I just, we get a report every year from the Main Street Association on what they raise and where those donations come from, and we get that at the end of every year. And I don't know if you've gotten the last five, but I've taken two of them.
This year?
When I was on the board.
You know, this year.
I wrote one.
Please, please, Ann, please.
I'm asking, I don't know.
I literally wrote those, Council of the Borough. So, and I handed it to everyone on council, and you were here. But I'm sure, we can reach out to the association to make sure you get that, but they do present that every year, exactly how much they raise. In the last four budgets, we've asked them to match donations that we're giving them, and in each of those years, they've raised more money than we asked.
Guys, just a round, 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 and exactly.
This isn't round and round. I'm asking specific questions.
Do you want to dial the budget? If you want to try to dial the budget?
Listen, Mr. President, listen, listen, I have the right to ask questions. It's my job, it's my responsibility. You do not have the right to decide what questions are valid or not, okay? These are questions that I.
Stick, stick to the 30,000 then.
I am, that's I need it in order to verify and to validate 30,000.
Go ahead, please.
I mean, I want to know the history of what's going on.
Anything else?
So, yes. I will say that it does say here in the law, which is 1202, it's in the borough code, the borough shall require any, any of the nonprofits, but this is specifically an emergency services organization, to provide for the borough an annual itemized listing of all expenditures of these funds before the borough may consider budgeting additional funding for the organization. Have we received that from, just for any nonprofit? And you're saying that we have not received it. So I'm gonna say to the borough council that according to the borough code, we are, if, if Main Street, we're not allowed to contribute money to a nonprofit, only specific types of nonprofits. My question is, what type of nonprofit is Main Street that they are eligible to receive for a fund?
Yeah, I'll answer that again.
Thank you.
I really think this, you're, you bring up this issue here, I really think it's a state issue, because the downtown, the Main Street Association is a state program through the Department of Community Economic Development. I remember saying this again last year. West Chester had one, I think there are four in Chester County, and there must be 100 throughout Pennsylvania. And all of those municipalities donate money to the Main Street Association as way to offset, or typically be consulting costs. We're boroughs, and we're lucky enough to qualify. I would suggest you reaching out to the Secretary of Department of Community Economic Development and letting them know about your displeasure about municipalities contributing to these types of, these nonprofits. I will say that as the mayor of this community for the last seven years, one thing I'm particularly proud of is the way volunteer, the volunteerism here, and the fact that we have both stepping up to do this type of work on the behalf of the government at very little cost. When I got elected mayor seven years ago, and you were elected the same year, this budget, this lineup in the budget was over $100,000 in consulting work to do nonprofit grants. And I have to be friends and know a lot of other mayors and similar boroughs, and they contribute lots more to these types of consulting costs. We're doing it through a nonprofit that we set up as a way to offset downtown taxpayer dollars. And we have this amazing group of volunteers, and not just the Main Street Association, the fire department, the library board, and others, that are going out and bringing grants, they're not getting paid to do this, they're volunteers, and they're doing a terrific, terrific job. And that's the reason why for the last four years downtown taxes haven't been going up, because we've had volunteers doing a lot of the work that our municipal government would have to do otherwise. So I just want to say on behalf of all 8,000 private residents in downtown, how quickly much I have of the nonprofits here. And I know, talking to residents in this community who are paycheck to paycheck, trying to pay their mortgage every month, how much they appreciate the fact that these volunteers are going out, doing that work, preventing our taxes from going up.
So, no, 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 I'm sorry. No, I, I.
Excuse me, I'll pressure you a minute. Excuse me. You'll get your.
He's answering my question.
Excuse me. I want to comment on, guys, what, what they do, a lot of the stuff, you can't put a price tag on, the hours, the programs, the, the stuff they do, it's more than just making $5 or $10. It, it's making hundreds of thousands of dollars in goodwill for the community. The events they run, the, the parades they held, it, it's just unbelievable. You can't even put a price tag on it. Go ahead, you have another question?
Yeah, okay, so it, it, just back to the answer, the answer to my question, then, Mr. Mayor, you're saying that they're part of listening programs, so that's how they're, that's why they qualify for funding for the borough. That, that, that's what you just, right? I mean, that's all I'm looking for, is why they qualify for funding for the borough. So you went into a long discussion, but I, I didn't, that's the bottom line? Is that?
Yeah, I would suggest, I would suggest if you have questions about the validity of Main Street associations, you go to the Department of Community Economic Development website, look at why they suggest boroughs in downtown investing in Main Street associations.
That wasn't my question. That wasn't my question, not the validity of Main Street programs. I'm asking, well, how is council comfortable providing a contribution to this nonprofit? And how does this nonprofit qualify for, for funding?
Are you making a secondary motion or?
No, I'm asking a question. I'm asking a question why they, I understand why a fireplace, I understand why a library, I understand why a senior set, I understand all of this. I do not understand how the nonprofit is, is eligible for the con, for this.
In regards to the budget, what are you trying to accomplish?
I'm trying to find out, if they don't qualify, then they shouldn't be, which would be giving them money.
So are you making a secondary motion and removing from the budget?
No, I'm asking you a question. Everybody seems okay with it, I just want to know why.
I think everyone's okay with it.
Well, we can tell on that. Any other questions?
Why are you okay with it? That's.
Yeah, this is the budget. We don't have to tell you why we're okay with spending the money.
We have to tell the public.
We can prove for non-activity, okay?
Why they qualify.
Do you have any more questions on the budget?
No, I think that what you're doing is illegal.
Thank you very much.
You know, I just told you, what you're doing is illegal. If you want to prove it, go ahead.
Thank you. We have a motion of second. All in favor? I'm sorry, Steve.
Just one quick thing, I know the motion was to approve the 2017 preliminary, but we actually need a motion to advertise.
That would be illegal.
Good. Motion would intent to adopt, Phil?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Okay. Questions?
Take this one.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed?
Don't want to go to jail.
Thank you.
Move.
Please, please, please. All righty, guys. First of all, I, I got time. I would thank the staff.
Yes, absolutely.
Karen, Steve, Tom, Jackie, Howard, everybody's been number crunching, number crunching, number crunching. Everything keeps going up, guys, the insurance is, we just had the police contract, everything, the wages, and to be able to hold this, and for this staff to, to watch this money like this is unbelievable. I just want to thank you very much. Great, great.
And Carrie, your first one. Congratulations.
I'm only going down from here, right?
No, no, you carry you have a great job.
All right, good, guys. And Steve, that goes, and what have we got on that again? That'll be?
That'll be December 7th. At this point, we'll advertise it for a public inspection, and we'll make the budget available for residents to come in and take a look at, and we'll adopt on December 7th.
Very good. Thank you. All righty, new business, motion to award the bid, but Steve, you tell, I want to tell City of the City of God here.
Yeah, we put a tab sheet in your package. Obviously, if you look at it, we, we did have three options. One was to keep our trash on Tuesday. The second option, I put out because we were getting tight on the budget, and I said, well, if you put in Thursday, then I thought to myself, well, what if the contractor of the hall had already Tuesday and Thursday booked? What if we went to any other day, at least, would we save some additional money? So doing that, I think we did. I think A.J. Blazinski is the low bidder moving the trash to Thursday, or I believe they said Friday. It's probably a $21,000 savings over the contract. It's not a lot, but every little bit helps. So I think it's great that our numbers came in. We got some very good bids. I think we're about $6,000 a year over what we're paying now for waste collection and recycling collection. And that number is locked for four years, so we know it's only a $6,000 per year increase. So I'm very happy with, with our current company, and I'm also very happy with A.J. Blazinski and the judge they did here for prior to the public services.
So no increases to trash fees?
Right now, there'd be no increase to trash fees that we see, or sewer fees. We'll look at it maybe in June or July and see where we are, but this time, we don't anticipate any budget increase in taxes or fees or sewer revenues.
And that doesn't affect the budget collection, and that, that is all taken, right? Steve, we can raise that we did last year.
We, yeah, we, there is an ordinance in place, and these are a fee for services, so we can raise those at any time, just to match our expenditures. At this point, we haven't done it for years, and I don't, we don't have to do it this year, so I think we'll be okay with things happening. So hopefully with the new recycling containers, our tipping fees are going to go down. I think the budget, 385 total.
38.
380 for tipping fees for trash collection, so I think we'll be okay.
Right, we have a motion to approve A.J. Blazinski at 892800, total.
For Thursday collection.
Thursday collection.
I'm going to ask a question.
We, we ask one. We can still talk.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. You got that, Steve?
I missed the first. That's all right. Next.
And just for the news, so you're saying it's to Thursday or Friday, or?
Yeah, we actually, we'll put together something tomorrow to talk about. She wants to get something out if, if the approval happens tonight, to let residents know and get that word out that we'll be changing Thursday collection.
And this includes both childrens, is that how you say it?
That's correct. It'll be a recycling and a trash.
Any idea when that recycle is coming up?
That should be here December. We hope to have the recycled bins out on the street and delivered to each resident by first collection in January.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, just maybe we have a thing. Alex, Jeff?
No.
Go ahead, Ann.
So before we had Blazinski, and now we don't, but now we're going to go back to Blazinski, right?
Well, we did it out in Blazinski. Last contract was not the low bidder, having to do the public waste. This time, Blazinski is the low bidder for Thursday.
I thought, I thought maybe you remembered that, right? And they're okay with the, the toders that we have, or for the trucks, you remember we did any changes?
Yeah, if you, yeah, I don't, I assumed I gave you a concrete entire bid, but that was bid for 2,496 gallon toders and 2,400 gallons, or 2,464 gallon toders. They have rear loaders and they have automated loaders, so Lake Drive area, obviously, it's automated side loader. Some of the other tighter streets, you'll get the rear hydraulics up, but they're all hydraulic.
So that we don't have, we won't have to make any changes to our toders or anything like that? Everything is.
All spec'd out. So Steve, that's part of his job, he may shift the, everything spec'd out.
Thank you. That's my question.
All righty, motion is second, all in favor? Vote.
Just, I want to comment.
Sure.
We keep it away from Friday, and make the first one.
We, that was a motion for first.
Okay, go.
In case there are any misses, we're happy that we have that today.
That's good.
Not a Saturday, you know?
That's a good point. I'd be more worried about the trash cans, people who leave for the weekend. Trash cans sit down all weekend.
Hey, guys, there's, there's another prime example.
That's good, but it's probably going to work right there.
Another prime example of how Steve, you know, saves his money by doing that. We really appreciate you. Any updates for council, starts on this side?
Just a couple, within Santa Claus is going to be paying a lot of visits to the borough next month, December 3rd. The log house will have their annual log house Santa from 1:00 to 4:00, where people can bring their children in to see Santa, snap their own picture for free, or we'll print one for you for $5 donation. December 9th, Friday night, at, from 6:30 to 7-ish, we'll have a Christmas tree. We'll be returning to the concrete area right next to the log house. Haven't had one there in several years, and I've had many requests from the borough residents to have that back, and we're working on that. As we speak, I know Jack's working on, and got a lot of people busy on that one. And then, of course, December 10th, the world famous downtown Christmas parade, which we've been having a lot of meetings about and getting ready. Meetings, we started planning that back in, like, March and April. We don't wait till November to start planning that, so that's all I got.
I was out delivering home for the holiday flyers. If you need one, let me know, but from December 10th through the 22nd, we'll be having a home for decorating competition, thanks to the downtown Gondale Chamber. $200 for first place, $100 for second, $50 for third. Everybody gets to vote. You will pay $5 to vote online. It's all on the, on the borough website. Half the money goes to the VA hospital for our veterans, and half to go to future market rep events. Secondly, our Comcast television station will go live in three weeks, so we need to think here about whether we are going to film or put on our borough council meetings. For the. I think you all need to think about that, and let us know, let us, being the district, because the district is working with the borough to provide this station.
Thank you. Josh, have things?